All right. Thank you for joining us. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have the TELCITY Common Council Meeting, March 1st, 2021. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me pull up a flag here for everybody in case you don't have one handy. And please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. To the republic which it stands. Thank you all. Oh, I didn't share my screen. I'm sorry.
No, we didn't see the flag.
I shared it for me. I seen it. That's, I guess that counts. I'm so sorry about that. Here, there, it was there, I promise. There it is, this little lake. I'm sorry. All right. Next item on the agenda is actually adoption of the agenda. I do have one little typo in it. Under item F, it says, "Request to reappropriate funds for animal shelter." It should just be, "Request to appropriate funds for animal shelter." Just take off the RE in it. And that was, let me pull it up so everybody knows what I'm talking about. That was my mistake and I apologize for not taking care of that sooner. So it's item F under new business, just take off the RE. And I don't have any. We have a motion to approve by John. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it, sir.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda stands approved. Next item on the agenda is the Presentation of the Minutes. Pull these up for everybody. They should have been distributed out on Friday and maybe even sooner than that. These are from our February 1st. I'll scroll through these slowly. If somebody needs me to stop for any clarification, just let me know. And that's it. If there are no changes to the minutes that's presented, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion made by Gary. Do I hear his second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes stand approved. Next item on the agenda is comments of the citizens. We do have one citizen just joining us this evening. If you have any comments, please do so now. Okay. We'll move on to committee and ward reports. First up, we'll start with Councilman Ward 1, Larry Kleeman.
I have no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Ward 2, Councilmember Julie Koner.
No report here either.
Okay, we'll move on to Ward 3, Councilmember Phillip Simpson.
I went to a TELCITY Regional Arts Committee meeting. They have some really dedicated people down there running that committee now. It's, it's great. Um, let's see. Now, I got to tour their proposed building that they had not signed a lease for, they told me. Which we'll talk about later, but, and I can talk more about that later. I got to ride around in a snowplow. Thank you, Mayor, for setting that up for me.
You're welcome. Did they let you drive?
Yeah.
They wouldn't let me drive either.
I didn't ask.
I didn't ask either, but I just.
Uh, I've tried visiting a few city workers. I'm gonna do that again soon. Just go down and, I haven't toured the water plant yet. Let's see. Uh, I went to the RDC meeting, saw Mayor there, and that was good. Now, I've almost had a couple wrecks on Seventh and Washington. Where Larry's pointed out before that there, that intersection, so that's all I got.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Phillip. Next up, we have Ward 4, Councilmember, Mr. And Council President, sorry, Mr. Gary Morton.
Uh, got a report here, our recycling and management to met again in February. Uh, few things here. The, the COVID, I think, and various other ailments, we've had some sick employees there at the recycling plant, which has made it a little difficult to operate. We have been in operation, but it has put us somewhat behind down there. The solid waste recycling many, but district office now is now open to the public. I think you have to possibly knock something when you go in there and you must, of course, wear a mask. But it is now open to the public. Payments or the payments for 2021 have been sent out. And some of the payments are coming in now on schedule. As far as the plant itself down there, we have a baler. Uh, now baler is sort of the guts of the operation there. The plastic we send out must be baled. The car, cardboard, the paper, and it just keeps us going. So it is very probably the most important piece of equipment up there. It's giving us some problems. And, you know, if it's not one thing, it's something else. Right now, there, there's a device on there called the automatic shut-off, which is computer-controlled. And that's not working right now. So when the, the baler, I guess, is full of materials, again, the worker has to manually shut it down or it just continues to run. So they're, they're getting it looked at. Right now, we haven't got the problems figured out yet. Every year, there is a DEA Drug Takeback Day, where they take back unused drugs around homes and things like that. So that will be April 24th, Saturday, and the drug takeback day here in TELCITY is at the fire department there on 12th Street. So you might want to serve with that if you have any unused or outdated medications around your home. April 24th. As far as prices right now, the, we talked the last year or two, how the Chinese are pretty well backed off of our cardboard. They backed off of our, our glass and so forth. But the domestic market is tending to pick up somewhat now. And so that's helping stabilize prices. And in some cases, we've seen an increase in cardboard and office paper. It's not what it was, let's say, a few years back, but it's, it's coming back from the, the low depths of a couple of years ago. So that, that's good for us because that is one of our major sources of income. So our next meeting there will be March 25th at 4:00 PM. And again, as you mentioned a while ago, Mayor, we're not sure if it'll be a Zoom or in-person. And Ken will make that decision sometime in the month of March. That's about it.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Next up, we have Councilmember at Large, Mr. John Little.
I have no report, Mayor.
Okay. Next up, we have TELCITY Clerk-Treasure Connie Berger.
Yes, I'd like to report to the council members that on between March the 15th and 18th, I'm going to be attending the Indiana League of Municipal Clerk and Treasurers Institute and Academy classes. This year, they will be virtual, so I will be doing them here at City Hall. And I did apply for one of their scholarships to cover the cost of the registration for the meeting. And I did receive the scholarship. So at this time, it will not be costing the city anything for me to take these classes. And I'm anxious to take them. They've got a lot of interesting, very interesting topics. So.
That's great. Glad that you was able to receive that grant and save some funds. So that's fantastic. Uh, next up, we have City Attorney, Mr. Jeff Haggard.
Sorry?
Do you have any report?
Uh, all of the stuff that I have to report will come later on when we discuss.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and move on to old business. Item A is the TELCITY Historical Society/Regional Arts Request for Funds. Connie, do you want me to kind of get it or do you want me to?
You can go ahead. That's fine.
Okay. Connie did do some, some looking in the riverboat funding and was able to come up with for TELCITY Regional Arts and the TELCITY Historical Society roughly $2,000 each. What you could, there's a lot of options you guys can do. You could, typically, we like for these requests to come to us during budget time. So we don't have to go back and do all these, you know, reappropriations and so forth. So what you could do is you could, you could give them the 2,000 now and wait and see how the funds go the year. Obviously, we don't want to run that fund in the red, and Connie would not let us do that.
No, I would not.
But what you could do is give them that now and then maybe sometime August, September, see where we stand in that balance and the funds coming in. And then if you want to appropriate the additional or the rest amount requested, you could do that. It's not saying no, but I think it's a way of just using caution with COVID. Is really probably the smartest way you can come up with when it comes to, especially using those kinds of funds like that are depending on revenues and attendance from casinos.
And we, normally, we do not receive our riverboat funding until April or September. So by then, we would know also if we're going to receive our full amount for this year of the 40, approximately 43,000.
So Council, that's kind of where we're at with that. I'll let you guys discuss this amongst yourselves in the meeting here and make the motion whenever you guys decide what you want to do.
Chris, I do have one other thing I'd like to point out to the council is that in this year's budget, you have appropriated $1,000 already for the TELCITY Regional Arts for them to use for however they wanted. So didn't, you know, don't know if you want to, them to use that towards this funding or, and reduce it down to just $1,000 that they would get in addition to that thousand or how the council felt on that.
Thank you, Connie. That's a good point to bring that up too. So I appreciate that. I did forget to bring that up. So, Council, I would like to hear your thoughts and your opinions. And Phillip, you did meet with Regional Arts, attended the meeting, went down to check out their building. So you're a little bit familiar with that situation.
I have a couple of questions. I'm more familiar with the Historical Society than I am the Regional Arts Commission. But is the Regional Arts Commission, is it an incorporated body?
Yes, it is incorporated.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
Their last meeting, there's talk about rebranding and renaming, and that was brought up. Is it incorporated? And it was. So.
Mayor, a question I have, what, what plans would they be having for this coming year to utilize those funds? What kind of plans are available to us?
Well, I know they're, they're wanting to use those funds to, how I understand it, and I hate to speak for, on behalf of Regional Arts entirely. But I think they want to use a lot of these funds to offset the cost to pay the rent of the Swiss plywood building. Now, are they going to use these funds for some other stuff? I can't answer that for certain, but that's how I, I took it when it was presented to the council last month. Is that right? Is that what everybody else heard?
Yeah, that's what was discussed at the meeting.
Okay. Well, I just don't want to mislead anybody or miss, misspeak for them because I'm not representing them on here necessarily. I don't want to lead anybody down the wrong path.
Well, was Historical Society was at for utilities that, where they're located?
Yes.
Correct.
That's correct.
Well, I personally like the idea of what was already mentioned, to do 2,000 total for each group and then to look at it later around August and then see if we are able to do more at that time.
So, so 2,000 additional for each or?
2,000 total for each now. You said Historical Society already has 1,000 coming, so I would just add 1,000 to.
Reverse that, Regional Arts.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought we appropriated like $500 for the Historical Society.
It was requested, but then you did not approve it. Because when we worked that budget last year, we had to make major cuts because we thought we were only going to receive half of our funding.
Okay, got it. Okay. Thank you.
Council, anybody else have any thoughts or concerns on this? Julie's kind of expressed her.
Well, was that the form of motion, Julie?
I could make it that if you would like.
Okay. We have a motion.
And I will make a motion.
Made by Julie. For each group to get a total of $2,000 each day. Historical Society and Regional Arts, is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Gary. Any further discussion?
I, I would just add one thing. I brought this up to the mayor. I'm, I'm wondering myself, especially the Regional Arts, not so much the Historical Society. But if the Regional Arts Organization, if that shouldn't be funded by the Convention and Visitors Bureau out of their budget. Because I think that's, I think the activities are related, I think, in part to drawing in more tourists. So I'll just make that comment.
And before we vote on this, this will have to go on, if, if it's approved by the council, this will have to go on next month's agenda under old business, right Connie? To approve the appropriation?
No, it won't be a reappropriation. It'll be an additional appropriation.
Sorry. I keep saying re, I gotta quit, get that out of my vocabulary.
We, we will have to appropriate these funds. I'll have to advertise it in the paper and then it'll come before you as a resolution next month.
They're wanting to turn this, the, the building they have down there, they want to like start offering instrument lessons to locals and instrument lessons. They want to put on plays, whatever they can fill up rooms. So I don't necessarily believe it's a tourism thing, but, I mean, it is always good to look at other entities, see if they should be funding them too. So I kind of agree with players, maybe, you know.
Well, I would tie that in, in council between now and next month's meeting when it's advertising or anything. I personally believe in holding, if we're going to give money to entities such as the Historical Society, Regional Arts, I think they should yearly fill out a report for us and explain to us what the funds went to, what, what benefits has that applied to communities? Have they had plays? How many attended? What other options and avenues have they been able to raise funds? Because I don't think the city should be in the line 100% to fund these organizations. They should also be addressing, you know, we applied a united way. We applied for this. We applied for that. We've done fundraisers. So we're not the sole bearer of their bills. So I think they really need to be accountable for that. If you don't want to do that, council.
No.
Lot of money, but I'm just saying, I like the idea because when a resident will ask you, and I'm putting my council hat on, my former council resident asked you, why did you give them that funds and what's it went to? You can tell them exactly. Rather than, we just gave them $2,000 and didn't ask any questions.
Do the commissioners, do they get a riverboat fund too? Like the county council?
Oh, yeah.
Well, on that form, we could also ask them if, because a lot of the people that would be using the TELCITY Regional Arts would be the county and Cannleton and Troy. We could put on that form if they've asked them to.
Cannleton gets riverboat funds and so does Troy. Not, well, I mean, they do. It's not a substantial amount. Ours is not a substantial amount either.
Yeah.
But they do. So just be thinking of things that you may want in that report for next month, you know. Just kind of make a little, you know, note and we can bring that up and it could probably, I think it should be consistent across the board for the Historic Side Region Arts could be the same form. I don't think you need to craft one for each one, but just my recommendation. So, any other discussion?
I think that's a good idea, Mayor.
Okay. Well, if there's no discussion, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Connie will work on getting that advertised and it will appear again under old business on our April meeting. That's all we have under old business. So we're going to move on to the new business. And the first item is additional appropriation for community crossings. Let me pull this up. This seems a bit overwhelming at first, so don't be too concerned, but Connie, you, you can explain this 10 times better than I can. I can explain it, but I'll butcher it.
Okay. As you know, we did receive Community Crossings funding for round, from round two of 2020. And we are in the process now, we have advertised for bids. It was in today's paper. But in order for us to be able to sign the contract on those bids, we have to have our funding in place. And so we're asking for out of the highway MVH restricted fund to have for round two of last year, 130,000 appropriated. And then we have also gone ahead and figured what we will need if we're awarded round, in round one of 2021, that we would receive, we need to appropriate 60,000 out of this fund for a total of 190,000. And then where these grant funds are paid and where we put in the state money that we will receive is in the fund called Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund. So for round two from 2020, the total amount of the, what we will spend for the road projects is 963,904.56. And then if awarded round one from this year, our total amount will be 828,475.95. So we would, and as you can tell, we will, we will be moving some funds in from some other, other, some other funding in from other funds to make up the county's share on this. And that will be coming from our edit fund, our regular MVH budget. Then what we are appropriating here in the MVH restricted, and then there is some in our local bridge and local road bridge matching grant fund that will all make up our $240,000 match on this grant.
She meant to say city, by the way.
Did I say county?
You did. But I didn't want anybody to be confused. They may not even caught it.
I apologize. I.
I know that. It's okay.
After 30 some years, county just still keeps coming out. So, so.
So Connie does the, the, the 963, 904 and the 828, 475, that includes the 190,000 above.
Correct.
Okay.
Plus some more that we will, that's already appropriated in other funds.
In other funds, okay.
Yes, I should have said that. Yes.
So what this means is we are awarded round one of 2021 for the Community Crossings for the paving. You will see about one point, almost $2 million in paving, close to it. Take place in 2021 in the city. One, you know, 1.8 million at least.
Do we know when the decision will be made or announced?
And I haven't seen the date officially yet. I look for it to be within the next 30 to 60 days.
So if it, if it is not approved, these funds just go unspent. Is that correct, Connie?
Correct.
And we can apply again for round two of 2021 Community Crossings and still use that pot of money, I guess.
Yes, that, that appropriation will be there to spend. Yes.
Yeah. So, uh, this is kind of a, a roll call. You know, it's your nay and your yays. Any other discussion on this before we call for a vote? Okay. I'll need somebody to make a motion and.
I'll make the motion that we approve this.
Okay, we have a motion made by Larry. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor signify by saying aye or a.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, yae.
Okay. Any nays? Okay, you'll need to come in and sign this. Make sure you sign in the right column. So when you come in and sign it, please.
So please come in and sign in the next few days if you can.
Let me close this out. Give me just a second, Council. We're going to item B on their agenda. Item B on the agenda is the public hearing. Let me pull this up. This is the public hearing now for the Cumulative Capital Development Fund. Connie, do you want me to read this or do you want to?
Doesn't matter.
I'll let you read it. You wrote it. So I mean, it's easy.
I, I copied what the state said that we had to advertise in that. So it's a notice to the taxpayers of a hearing on proposed CUM capital development fund. Notice it's hereby given the taxpayers of the city of TELCITY, Perry County, Indiana, that the Common Council of City of TELCITY will consider at a Zoom meeting, and it has the ID and passcode at 7:00 PM on March 1, 2021, the establishment of a CUM capital development fund under the provisions of Indiana IC 36-9-15.5 for the purpose as follows, for all uses as set out in IC 369-15.5 Municipality Cumulative Capital Development Fund. The tax will be levied on all taxable real and personal property within the taxing district and will not exceed .05 per 100 of assessed valuation. The proposed fund will be levied beginning with taxes due and payable in the year 2022. Taxpayers appearing at such a hearing shall have the right to be heard thereon. The proposal for establishment of the CUM capital development fund is subject to approval by the Department of Local Government Finance. Within 30 days after the date of the adoption of the CUM fund by the Commons Council of the City of TELCITY, the City of TELCITY will publish a notice of adoption. Upon publication of the notice of adoption, 50 or more taxpayers in the taxing district may file a petition with the county auditor no later than noon, 30 days after the publication of the notice of adoption, setting forth their objections to the proposed fund. And this was advertised in the paper on February the 18th and February the 25th. And what this is doing, it is, this is allowing the public now to make any comments that they would have on establishing, and what we're doing is re-establishing this rate. The current rate is .044 and we would be increasing it to .05. And by doing this, that will bring in approximately 12,000 more dollars in tax dollars collected in 2022.
And Council, before we, I open the floor to discussion of, of the council regarding this, I think you, if you could hold your comments to item C, which is the ordinance itself. Does this being a public hearing, this is, we do have some of the residents that did join in. This is their chance to voice their concern and their questions regarding this, and I would like to give them the time to do this, to do so. So we do have a few residents on. If you do have a comment, please state your name for the minutes, please. And I'll, I'll give you all just a moment to do that. Make sure you check, if you're on mute, make sure you unmute yourself, please. Okay. Hearing no comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the Cumulative Capital Development Fund. We'll move on to ordinance, excuse me, item C, ordinance for Cumulative Capital Development Fund. Just a moment and I'll pull that up, Council. All right. We can go ahead and read the ordinance or we can go ahead and open the floor to discussion. It doesn't matter to me. Council, what would you prefer?
I, I have some questions, Chris.
Sure.
And I talked to Connie the other day about this. What, what are these funds used for? What's the purpose of these funds?
Well, I guess the question is better, what, yeah, what, what have we used them for in the past and some things it can be used for? Connie, I'll.
Purchase equipment. And I mean, I didn't go back and research many years, you know, years past, and I hadn't been here. But the main thing that, you know, you're looking at is, is to do any kind of CUM cap, any kind of development that if we had something that we needed to do here on, anything on city properties for development and that, like new playground equipment or that, or equipment for the street department, that kind of things. And things that are outside of their regular budget. And yes, the cemetery is good also because we did use some of these funds last year towards one of the pieces of equipment we purchased.
We used some of the cumulative capital of it for the leaver, didn't we?
Uh, yes. No, we did not.
We did not? Okay.
No, we used it for the mower for here at City Hall and at the cemetery.
Okay. I couldn't remember.
Police and Fire Department would, equipment also be into this possibly?
Correct. If they would have no place else to pay for it, yes. Yes.
So public safety.
Yes.
I noticed Connie in your, in your report, which was in the paper, that if I'm looking at the right line item, we had 70, a little over $74,000 of receipts last year, and we spent a little over 7,500, leaving a balance of roughly 132,000 in account. Is that correct? A little over seventy-five hundred, leaving a balance of roughly a hundred and thirty-two thousand in account, is that correct?
That sounds correct, yes.
Good.
And one thing, counsel, to keep in mind, this is, this is important when it talks about fire equipment. We are going to have to purchase a new fire engine, uh, this year or next year. The one we have now is, you know, definitely showing its age and wear, and so those funds could come from this, so. If they don't come from this, I'm not saying we couldn't afford it somewhere else, but. This is a source for that, and these funds will actually, we won't see these funds until. Two thousand and twenty-two even, right?
Correct, we will, they, they will not, we will not see this increase until then, till two thousand and twenty-two.
And again, counsel, just for point of clarity, this is, this is the council's decision, it's not gonna hurt my feelings necessarily one way or another, but. I just want you all to, to understand what it all means, and if I know it, I'm gonna tell you, so. Uh, be open and honest about everything, where it's, where it can be spent, so. You can't come back later and say, well, why don't we have the money for it? Well, this is, this is why, I just want you all to understand that, so.
And the Department of Local Government Finance did recommend. That we do break, increase this rate back up to the point zero five, and that's as high as that rate can go. And I know that this has been done in the past. Where when the rate got to a certain point or what, then it would be raised back up.
This one's been around a while too, right, Connie?
Correct, yes.
Connie, uh, we're hit pretty, pretty hard on tax caps, aren't we?
I haven't seen a lot, I mean, we haven't. You know, we don't have any idea yet what we're, should receive or going to receive from the county yet.
Yeah, but I, I just like, when I, I've looked at it before in Tell City. We're like ranked in the top ten or maybe Perry County for how hard we are hit for. Tax caps, and so maybe doing little things like this can help us get by.
Correct, because this is outside of the, the tax, outside of. The general fund, this is a separate fund totally. Now, this fund does get hit by the caps though, because it is a tax-driven fund. So the tax caps do affect what we receive on this fund.
Did I understand you to say, Connie, that currently it's a point oh four four, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
So this is about a half a cent raise, right? Half of one percent?
Yes.
Oh, what happens if we do nothing?
If you do nothing, then the rate will start out for taxes paying in two thousand and twenty-two will either be the point four four or less. So then we would receive approximately the eighty-nine thousand that we will receive this year or less.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, personally, I, I feel in favor of raising it to this level, because. As we look down the road, we know that the, uh, items we're gonna have to be buying and paying for and so forth, the. Our cost of government's not gonna go down in twenty-one or twenty-two, so. I'm certainly in favor of doing this, and again, it's been around the wall, and, uh, we're not talking about a huge increase here at all.
I know it's a really small increase, but I personally wouldn't. Want to do it now, just because I believe it's been a difficult year for many people. And I hate to raise taxes at all on anything. I know we need the money, but I just, I would not.
Okay, well, counsel, uh, is there any further discussion? If not, I'll go ahead and I'll read the ordinance, Connie's read twice now, so it's my turn, we, we take. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance, um, we can have some more further discussions, any questions after I read it. And then we can so choose to, um, adopt or not adopt, so.
I'm sorry to, to step in, I, I think in order to. To avoid multiple readings, um, somebody would have to make a motion for a first reading. You, you get what I'm, I'm saying here?
Yeah.
Is it, is it, you could read it for informational purposes, but then if somebody makes a motion for a reading, you'd have to read it again.
That's fine, we can do that for, for the second time.
Just in case nobody wants to listen to it twice.
That's fine.
I have a motion for a first reading.
Okay, we have a motion made by Philip, do I hear a second? I don't know, I guess Gary got that one, seconded by Gary, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, this is gonna be the reading of ordinance eleven seventy-three. Ordinance resolution establishing a cumulative capital development fund under Indiana Code thirty-six dash nine dash fifteen point one. Be resolved by the common council of the city of Tell City of Perry County, Indiana. That a need now exists for the establishment of the cumulative capital development fund for the following purpose. For all use as set out in Indiana Code thirty-six dash nine fifteen, uh, uh, point five. Cumulative capital development, um, fund. Be further resolved that this board will adhere to provisions of Indiana Code thirty-six dash nine dash fifteen point five. The proposed fund will not exceed, uh, point zero five on each one hundred dollars of assessed evaluation. Said tax rate will be levied beginning with taxes for the two thousand and twenty-one pay two thousand and twenty-two. Be further resolved that proofs of publication of the public hearing. Held on the first day of March, two thousand and twenty-one. And a certified copy of this ordinance resolution shall be submitted to the Department of Local Government and Finance. Of the state of Indiana as provided by law. This cumulative gap development, uh. Fund is subject to the approval of the Department of Local Government and Finance. Due to adopted by the following vote of the members of the said, uh. Council city of Tell City on this first day of March, two thousand and twenty-one. Counsel, you've heard the first ordinance read, uh, excuse me, yea and nay and so forth, uh, in its entirety. Um, uh, entertain a motion to suspend the rules, uh, for second, third reading by title only.
I'll make the motion.
A motion made by Garrett here, second?
Second.
Seconded by Larry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading, ordinance eleven seventy-three, ordinance slash resolution establishment of cumulative capital development fund. Under Indiana Code thirty-six dash nine dash fifteen point five. Third reading, ordinance eleven thirty, excuse me, ordinance eleven seventy-three. Ordinance resolution establishing a cumulative capital development fund under Indiana Code thirty-six dash nine dash fifteen point five. Counsel, you've had the first, second, and third reading of this ordinance, uh, um, any further discussion before calling for a vote? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Let the record show, we have, uh, four a's and one nay. The a's will be, uh, Philip Simpson, Gary Morton, Larry Kleeman, and John Little, and the nay being, uh, Julie Connor. If you could, please come in and sign this, um, in, in your perspective column, please. Connie, is that it on that?
Yes.
Okay, I tried to read that fast, about stuck on too much on it.
Oh.
I will, I will be placing a notice in the paper now this week. To notify the public that this has passed, and then they will have thirty days in order to file a petition against it.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, we'll move on to item D, under new business, we have the conflict of interest disclosure statements. This is a yearly, um, disclosure that we do. We have, uh, council member Julie Conner, Connor Floor covering, it's a family-owned business. You have, uh, mayor of city of Tell City, Chris Kelt, real estate agent, Holland Realty, and owner of Firehouse Printing. You have city attorney Jeff Haggard, he represents Hoosier Energy, Royal Electric Corporation, Southern Power, Perry County Government, Perry County Porter Thirty, Antral, Perry Camera Hospital. Perry County Development Corporation, Lincoln Hills Development Corporation, Troy Township Order, PSC, and the town of Troy. You have cemetery committee member Ron Crawford the second with Crawford Family Memorials. And you have council member Philip Simpson, Simpson Insurance Agent, uh, Simpson Insurance LLC and Farmers Insurance Simpson Agency. I believe all these have been, uh, signed and turned in, if not, make sure you do get this turned in to Connie, please. So.
And then I will forward them to the county clerk's office and to the state board of accounts.
And there is no motion on this, right, Connie, this is information only?
Yes, I think that's it, yes.
Yes, that's just a disclosure.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I didn't forget anything. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance for street. Excuse me, vacating, hang on, do this, like, vacating the alleys and streets and all this great stuff. Jeff Harrington gets to read this one, because that's a little bit longer.
Yeah, and, and I will, uh.
God bless you, I was almost saying.
But before we get started, obviously, uh, I can do a little explanation. Um, as you are all aware, uh, the grant for the pool improvements through the DNR. Had certain requirements at the. Board of Works meeting earlier, we discussed, uh, the new deed, which the Board of Works has authorized the mayor to sign. The new deed creates a meets and bounds description, a ba- a boundary description. Of the, uh, roughly sixty acres that constitute Hagadorn Park, which is. What we all are familiar with as the park, plus the football practice area, all the softball fields, the pool, baseball field. Um, the tennis court, basketball courts, that entire area. Um, uh, the Board of Works authorized the mayor to sign that deed with the. Uh, language in there that dedicates it permanently as a park, so, so Hagadorn Park will from henceforward always be a park. I did explain to the, the Board of Works. That just because that language, dedication language requires it to always be a park, does not mean we can't develop. Uh, any of the, the area in the park, it just has to be developed for park purposes. So we can still build fields, we can still build buildings, put restrooms in there. Um, we can have a nice park with all the amenities that come with parks. Um, one of the other requirements was that we vacate all of the streets and alleys. Our Swiss ancestors that founded Tell City were very, very diligent. In planning out nice square blocks and wide streets that we enjoy. Well, they planned them in this area too, and they were never built. Um, but since they were on the plat, they show up in the survey of the, of the property, and the DNR wanted us to vacate all of them. Um, typically, when you vacate streets, there's a procedure where you publish notice and notify all the adjoining landowners. Well, there aren't any, so I consulted with Ice Miller. Um, and it is their belief that we can simply. Pass an ordinance to vacate these streets, because the only entity that would ever be entitled to any notice is the city of Tell City. The city of Tell City is aware of it, and the city of Tell City would never object to it. We need to do this to get our grant funds, so that's why I've got this ordinance sitting in front of you. Um, if somebody were inclined to make a motion for a first reading, I'd be happy to do that. I would note, it is my intention to just summarize the description by. Basically, when we get to the part of the ordinance that describes all of these streets and alleys. Just to say, all of the streets and alleys within Hagadorn Park, so that we don't have to go through. Roughly two pages of part of this and that and the other, in, in terms of listening to this. So if anybody is inclined to make a motion for a first reading with that. Uh, summary of the, the described streets and alleys, I'd be happy to do it.
So move.
We have a motion made by Garrett here, second? I don't know who got that one, Julie, you want that one?
Yeah, but did Julie?
Julie got that one, all right, we have a motions made in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Jeff, you may proceed reading this ordinance, Connie, do you know what, I should know what the last ordinance was, I just read it.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the number on this is one one seven four.
Got it, all right, thank you. Okay, Jeff, it's all yours, sir.
Number one one seven four. An ordinance vacating certain streets and alleyways within the boundaries of Hagadorn Park in the city of Tell City. Whereas certain streets and alleys, more particularly described herein, within the boundaries of Hagadorn Park, were originally incorporated in the plat of the city of Tell City. And whereas said streets and alleys within the boundaries of Hagadorn Park were never developed as streets or alleys. And whereas said streets and alleys are all within Hagadorn Park boundary, and as such, there are no adjoining landowners other than the city of Tell City. And whereas because there are no adjoining landowners, there is no requirement. That the city of Tell City provide notice to any persons with regard to the vacation of said city streets and alleys. And whereas the common council of Tell City, Indiana, having determined that no reason exists why the streets and alleys, as described herein, should not be vacated. And whereas the common council of Tell City, Indiana, having determined that further proceedings with regard. The vacation of said streets and alleys are unnecessary in order to comply with the appropriate statutes. Whereas the common council of Tell City, Indiana, now find that said city streets and alleys should be vacated. Now, therefore, be it hereby ordained by the common council of Tell City, as Tell City, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the following described streets and alleys be and hereby are vacated from and after the passage of this ordinance. And summarizing, the description describes all of these streets and alleys within the described boundaries of Hagadorn Park. Section two, this ordinance shall not affect the rights of any individuals to maintain their lines and apartments in the area of the streets or alleys herein vacated. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are repealed. Section four, within thirty days after the adoption of this ordinance, any aggrieved person may appeal the adoption of this ordinance. In the circuit court of Perry County, Indiana. Passed and adopted by the common council of Tell City, Indiana, this first day of March, two thousand and twenty-one. Signature line for Chris Kale, attest by Connie Berger.
Okay, counsel, you've heard, uh, ordinance eleven seventy-four read in its entirety. I intend a motion to suspend the rules and read the second and third reading by title only.
So move.
Have a motion made by Larry to hear a second?
Oh, second there.
Seconded by Gary, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Jeff, you may proceed with the second and third reading by title only for an ordinance eleven seventy-four.
Ordinance number eleven seventy-four, an ordinance vacating certain streets and alleyways within the boundaries of Hagadorn Park in the city of Tell City. Third reading, ordinance number eleven seventy-four, an ordinance vacating certain streets and alleyways within the boundaries of Hagadorn Park.
Okay, counsel, you've heard the, uh, first, second, and third reading of, of ordinance eleven seventy-four. Um, if there's no further, if there's no further discussion, I intend a motion to approve or adopt.
Almost, almost.
Have a motion made by Gary, do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
I apologize, folks, I, one thing I didn't note, and I'm sure you probably caught on to. Um, all, all the utilities that are in there, present to section two, still have their rights. Um, so even if they did not have easements and they had utilities placed in what used to be streets or alleys. The utilities maintain their rights, so we don't have any danger of any utilities being forced out of the park.
Yeah, you've got, you mentioned that when you read section two. Okay, thank you, counsel, for your support on this here, uh, this will get that whole area, including the JFK pool. The ball, the, all the fields, even the dog park. Um, all on one deed, which will allow us to receive our funds now finally from the DNR grant that was written a couple of years ago by the, um. Perry County Leadership Group, so it's very exciting, moving forward with the pool projects, I look forward for greater information from that. Pool will be opening this year, pending something, you know, something terrible happens, it may not, but. We don't anticipate any of that, we look for the pool to open up, splash pad may not, but, uh. Right with the pools, it's probably late summer, uh, still, but, uh, everything's on track unless something happens, so. Thank you for your support, it, it means a lot to me, it means a lot to the residents to see this accomplished. Um, we're gonna have a lot of great things going on this area with the, uh, sports complex, so that I'll be bringing before you, uh, sometime this year still as well, so, thank you. Um, we'll move on to item F, which is the request to appropriate funds for the animal shelter. And I can quit sharing my screen here, so I don't have anything else for this part. Counsel, uh, at our last, uh, meeting, uh, where we talked about animal shelter was probably. A year ago this meeting, maybe even February. Um, Herb Landers, uh, with the, uh, animal welfare board came for the council. Asking us to look at fundings for the animal shelter, uh, asking for about thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, we didn't really hear much from them up until recently. I did sit down with, um, Tom Hauser with the Perry County Commissioners, and they have agreed thirty-five thousand to the animal, uh, cause. I met with several animal advocates, I also met with Herb Landers, and, uh. I, it's my, uh, feelings that we should try to, to do this. Uh, we have, Connie did a lot of work, and I appreciate that. Uh, she was able to come up with about thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, that we can give, matching exactly what the county's giving to go towards the, uh. The animal shelter cause, and, uh, while this may not be the, the, the end-all for everything, it's going to at least give. Uh, the funds needed for the animal shelter, um, to get, get things started. I'm sure they're gonna be looking at other sources of funding, we may not be giving this every year, you know. But I think it's some good seed money, uh, to get them on their feet and get it started. Um, animal welfare is a, it's a huge concern of mine in this county and in the city, and I do think we need to. Do our part and try to help out and see where things go. Um, again, I can't promise this is gonna be the end-all of the animal issue that we have. But it's definitely gonna be a start in the right direction to correcting what the issue we have right now.
Chris, I've got a couple of questions, who's going to operate it, one? And secondly, in the past, the. It was sort of a shot in the dark, we had no idea what was happening up there, we didn't have any idea where our money were going. Or what their costs of operation were, is there gonna be a better openness as far as the accounting, uh, in from therein?
Well, I think that's, I, I'll kind of back that up to the same thing with historical society, with the regional arts. I think it's what you ask from them before you give them the funds. You can approve their funds. You can approve their funds, and then it's still got to go the same, appropriate the funds. It's still got to go the same thing, just like the Regional Arts and Historic Society. Is that right, Connie? Does it have to be advertised?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm sorry.
So, yes. You can appropriate the funds tonight. Connie will have to advertise that. And then coming back in our April meeting, you can have a list of requirements, you know, quarterly reports, yearly reports, annually, whatever you want. Asking for, you know, how many, you know, animals and so forth, and what what information you want. So the accountability is however you want to structure that, Gary.
I think it's important that we know what was.
I agree. I, that's why I said the same thing for the museum and the regional arts. I I couldn't agree with you more. And any anybody running it, I'm sure they'd be happy to get you that information if if you spell that out as part of the agreement. So.
Building on what Gary said, I I would like to have more information about the organization itself. You know, when when Herb appeared before us, it was actually last February, I think. He showed a group as River Edge Animal Shelter Incorporated. What type of incorporation is it? Is it not-for-profit? Is it a for-profit? Who's on the board? Is there a board? So I I I need more information on the organization itself.
Okay.
Also.
I'm sorry.
Also, Mayor, I went back and looked through the the budget that he presented to us last February. And under personnel, he listed, he showed the projected salaries for the four employees, I believe. And then he showed a line item called tax match. Now, I don't know what that is, but it's twenty-eight percent of the salary. If if he meant FICA match, FICA is like seven and a half percent, I think. I I don't know what that twenty-eight percent tax match stands for.
Larry, if it's okay with you, I will send out Herb's contact information with the council. You all could reach out to him one-on-one. And reach, I I encourage you to reach out to to them. I can provide you a list with the Animal Welfare Board of all their members. I think I've got all their contact information. I know I've got all the members, but I'm pretty sure Teresa's email had their contact information as well. I'd be more than happy to forward it to you. That gives the council some buy-in and and some some input in this animal agreement. This is a big deal. To me, it's important, but I want to make sure the council's on board with it, comfortable with it. They're educated. They understand. I can't, I could literally spend hours trying to tell you everything. And but I think it's best that the council kind of takes some time on their own and call Herb, talk to the county commissioners, see what what their thoughts are on it. I know you all could reach out to them very easily. You should have most of their information. And if you don't, I'll be happy to get it. But really, if you just, like I said, if you appropriate tonight, doesn't mean you have to say, give it to them yet, right, Connie?
Chris, they won't be appropriating it tonight. They will just be giving me the authority to advertise it for their next meeting. And then they can either approve it, they can make it less, or they cannot approve it at all. And that would be at their next meeting.
Thank you, Connie. You kind of, I didn't quite say it that way, and you clarified it for me.
Well, I just wanted to clarify it.
Yeah, you did. Thank you. I appreciate it, because I I use the wrong term sometimes.
Well, that's all right.
You helped me out. You're you're my rock on that. Thank you. So that's kind of where we're at with it, council. You would have a month to do some homework on it and and really feel comfortable with what you're doing.
With all due respect, Mayor, I I don't think the five individual council members need to be running individually, seeking information. If this company wants our money, they should be able to present a presentation to us, explain these things. Am I wrong on this, guys?
I agree. I agree with that.
I agree too, Larry.
And that's fine. It's up to you guys. I mean, I I'm do, I've done my part. I've helped find the funds. It's, you know, if you want them to come to your presentation, I can have them at our next meeting. It's what it's your guys' funds. It's your show.
Chris, isn't this when he came to us before? It was what he was wanting the city to give, it was quite a lot more than this, correct? Do you remember?
No, this was the amount.
No, he asked for thirty-five thousand.
Oh.
His proposal was thirty-five from the county, thirty-five from us, five from Johnson, and
Thousand from Troy.
A thousand from Troy.
But that didn't give him enough money to run it, did it? I thought he was still way short on what he said he would need.
You'd still have the deficit of, I think, eighty thousand dollars or something.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's that's whatever. That's correct.
Chris, you mentioned something to the effect that an agency that's got some experience in operating animal shelters, or is it going to be involved? Is that still on on the table?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
I think that's the important thing there. If if this happens and we agree to do this, that the people running it do have some experience and background in running an animal shelter.
I agree.
This should not be on the job training, I don't think, for those people up there.
I agree. And from what I'm my understanding is the the firm that they're looking at using or the company, it is a very reputable company. They have other animal shelters that they run. So they're not ready to announce that publicly yet, I don't think. So I that's why we hesitant in saying actually who that is publicly right now, out of respect for the Animal Welfare Board. So it's up to the council. If you want Connie to advertise this, if not, you can hold off on it. I mean, my love is for the animals. I'd like to try to get something done. You could go ahead and have it advertised and decide later, yea or nay, but at least you get the ball rolling in the meantime, so you're not behind another thirty days. So.
So we.
By asking Connie to advertise it, you're not necessarily approving it one hundred percent. You're asking her to advertise it, and then it will be, can be approved at your April meeting. You're just advertising the paper. That's all you're doing. Right, Connie?
Correct. And where we, I don't think it's ever been mentioned, the fund that I am suggesting would be your City General Fund is where we are, where I'm looking at to pay this, because if it's something that's going to be an ongoing expense, then we would set a department up within the general fund and pay it from there then.
If we if we advertise thirty-five thousand, can we adopt a lesser amount?
Yes. You can adopt more, but you can go less.
And I will reach out to the Animal Welfare Board about a presentation at our meeting, but I would encourage you to do your own homework on the side too as well. Ask questions, call, reach out to people. There's literally hundreds of people you could talk to about this. And just get this familiarize yourself with it. I I would encourage you to do that.
I'm not questioning the need. There's definitely a need. That that is obvious to me. But I have a whole lot of questions about what they're proposing here.
Well, hundreds of people wouldn't know the specifics, correct, Chris? It would just be.
No, and I mean, I'm just saying, just ask your friends and neighbors what their concerns and thoughts are on the whole, you know, idea of if this kind of thing, you know, get just do your homework, research it. Just look into what other communities have done on your own too. I mean, that's something that they may not bring to you, but I think it should be up to the council to look into it and just make some phone calls, visit another shelters if you want. I mean, this is, this is, the city's part of this too. We may not be the ones running it and the ones on the, you know, on it for it, but we were us and putting the money into it. Definitely getting this, you know, it's a buy-in in this. And it's important that you all understand what you're buying into, what what the commitment is and and what to expect of the of the animal shelter once it gets up and going. I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just saying, I, if I was you, I would try to call them. And, you know, I've done some on my own, but as well as, you know, I spent probably an hour and a half to two hours on the phone with Herb Landers a couple of weeks ago, and probably equally that with Tom Hauser, trying to educate myself on it. And I learned a lot. I I learned a tremendous lot. Probably spent an hour with Kim Strobel and Pam Metz, I think, as well. So and if you want any of those contact informations from either of those individuals, I I'll share all with you. I'm sure they wouldn't have a problem with it. But again, as I'm saying, just educate yourself. I can have Herb, if he's willing, and I'm sure he would be, to do a presentation at your April meeting. Counsel, what's your thoughts? Do you want to have Connie do the advertising part of this, or?
Well, I can do either way. Either way is is if we need to do it a month later, or if we need to do the appropriation now. I'm kind of on the fence with that. I mean, I definitely think that we need to do something as a community to help this thing exist.
Connie, is it?
Timetable. I can go either way with this.
Connie, is it fair to say if even if they allow the advertiser, they don't have to adopt it in thirty days? Can they wait sixty days on that or even further, or do they have to do it in that thirty-day timeframe?
They can table it, and then it can come before them at their next meeting, and I would not have to re-advertise it.
Okay.
So, yes. I had a time frame. They could table it at their meeting, and then it would come before them at their April meeting then, or a special meeting if you had one or something.
Let let me, let me probe just a couple of other questions, not specifically on the animal shelter, but it's it's related to the funds being available for the animal shelter. And and Connie, I'm not picking on you, but correct me if I'm wrong on these figures. I think when we were going through the budget worksheets last fall, whenever that was, we had to cut approximately three hundred thousand dollars out of, was it the general fund or was it all funds?
It was all funds.
Okay.
If I remember right.
Okay.
My my unappropriated balance for the the City General Fund has come back at a really good number. But what created that was our departments were very good last year, not spending all their budgets way down. I had a much better cash balance beginning January one this year than I had last year.
Yeah.
So that has helped to make a little bit of extra funding there within the general fund.
Yeah, I I noticed that the the figure that was published in the paper, the the cash balance at twelve, thirty-one, twenty, was about almost three hundred and eighty thousand more than what you'd estimated in our budget working.
Correct. Yes.
So I noticed that. That's good news.
Yes, that's good, very good news. And and I just felt if it's something that's going to be ongoing, it needed to be in that fund, in the general fund, because we pay for a lot of other things out of that rainy day fund, and we only get forty-three thousand when we get the full amount in the rainy day fund. So if we're only getting forty-three and you're spending thirty-five, then we're going to have to do some reductions in that rainy day fund, because you won't be able to fund everything in that fund then.
And I and I think you're you're correct on that now. The one issue that we grappled with during the budget working sessions was we didn't allow any salary increases for employees. Is that correct?
Correct.
I think you did some figuring to give us some estimates as to how much it would cost to give either a one-time raise or a percentage raise or something like that. I so that that's an issue that's still kind of on the table with me. I mean, if we're are we in good enough financial shape that we can do the animal shelter plus give salary increases? Or is it an either-or situation?
Well, if you remember back during budgeting time, I think, I don't know if Connie, I brought it up, that you should, you could have put a an increase in there, but didn't implement it, and that council chose not to do that. Is that right?
I think so, yes.
I know that, but is there anything prohibiting us granting an increase now?
A lot of advertising.
Well, any, the only people that would not get a raise would be your elected officials, because you cannot raise their salaries within a year. Once the salary's set, that's what it's set for. But all the rest of the employees, yes, you could, if you so choose, to have us work up something to see if we really could do it or not.
Okay, so everybody but the seven of us.
Correct.
I don't, I don't.
And that's, but I just wanted to point that out to you all. I was going to say something else, and I don't remember what it was.
Okay. Yeah.
Just remember too that we're looking at our low-it money in that we didn't really feel the impact yet of COVID, that we're going to be feeling that next year. So if you go in this year and give a raise and raise that, then you're going to may have a hard time doing your budget for twenty twenty-two.
But we could give a one-time stipend as an example.
Correct. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Another issue, and I know it's an unknown issue, but it's related to budget. The COVID relief or rescue plan on the national level is passed the House. It's now in the Senate. My understanding is there's money in there for state and local governments. I don't know whether it's going to be tied to COVID like the last ones were. My understanding is there was a big push push to make them more flexible. But I think we'll have an idea as to whether we're going to get any funds from that national plan within the next month or so. And and I don't know if we want to put off any decisions until we know if we're going to get additional COVID funds. So I I've said enough. I'll let others talk if they if they wish. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and concerns. Sorry, they're they're all valid, and I appreciate you making your comments. I do. Any of the council members have any comments before either voting or not voting or moving forward?
Ironically, I had a, I found a stray dog this week, and I didn't think where to take him. Of course, sometimes the animal shelter does get full anyways, but I just wanted to share that. So he almost had to spend the night here, but.
So, council, do you want to have Connie advertise it or or not? It's your decision. If they don't hear anything, they'll just sit alive or die for lack of motion, and we'll move on.
I'll make a motion that Connie goes ahead and requests this, knowing that we will additionally have additional times to either move farther with it or drop it. I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion made by Gary to hear a second.
I'll second that.
Second by John. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Let the motion or let the motion show that it was a five to nothing. All right. That's all we have in our new business under Mayor's report. I've got somewhat lengthy, but not overly. We did submit a grant today with IDIM for, it's actually, it is through IDIM, for it's the Community Recycling Grant Program to purchase two thousand of the storage recycling totes that everybody, a lot of people have, and the red ones. That program was started back in nineteen ninety-seven under then Mayor Bill Goffnutt. And all residents was able to to get one of those totes to kind of kick off the recycling program. Obviously, it's been quite some time since then. We've had a lot of new residents move in. We've had some people move. Some people have lost them. I feel that we need to be proactive in the recycling program and offer these to residents, those that need them again. So this is a fifty-fifty grant. We'll know April first if we receive it. We are going to purchase some lids that residents could buy if they had newspapers they recycled or wanted to live. They'd have to to buy that one, but the totes themselves, for those that need one, would be at that no charge. So I'll let you know the update on that April first, when they announce it. I did announce that the Board of Works on the fifteenth of February that the city of Tell City was awarded forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to do our comprehensive plan, so I just wanted to bring that up to the council, since you guys did give me the blessing to apply for that in the first place. The also do want to thank Old National Bank. I did, I have a note here for them too. They donated some stuff to the city. I just want to kind of make a note of for our minutes and and thank them for it. They're donating some chairs, credenzas, lamps, filing cabinets, some Christmas items and so forth. They also donated four large original Jerry Bomb prints that we're going to Filing cabinets, some Christmas items and so forth. They also donated four large original Jerry Bond prints that we're going to hang upstairs in our hallway. So maybe by our next meeting, we'll have those up there by then. So I just want to, if you see anybody with O National Bank, make sure you, you thank them for that. It was, it was very nice of the, no cost to the city. April first, I've written down as a date, we're planning to reopen city hall to regular foot traffic, of course, mask and so forth, social distancing would be required as long as the state statute or state allowed, making us do that. Also, the May is when I'm looking at actually having in-person meetings again. So again, this is all depending on the governor's orders and obviously our, our level. Right now, we're kind of in this yellow, blue, you know, I, I look on the state's map and you were blue, but you hover over it, we're yellow, so I say we're green. I don't know what that means. You mix blue and yellow, you get green, so we're green. Kind of made that up. The city was also awarded nine hundred and fifty four thousand three hundred and thirty one dollars and twenty six cents to put the sidewalks, if you hadn't heard that. From, on the east side of the street from Washington, all the way to William Tell Boulevard. Now, this project won't start this year. It won't start next year. It actually won't start till twenty twenty six. So I don't want people to be misled thinking that why isn't, you know, the mayor's promised this and nothing's getting done. Twenty twenty six is actually when that project, and these are called end dot call for projects. That's why it's so long. Which is good, because it gives us time to, to. Match up our fundings that we need for the grant. It doesn't, you know, it's not a big lump sum. We can set back a little bit each year, pay a little bit each year, whatever, how it's set out. That's all I have under the, the mayor's report. Any questions on any of that? I would know that pretty quick.
One question on the sidewalk project, Mayor.
Sure.
I, I read through that letter rather hurriedly, but does the preliminary engineering work have to be done before that though, before twenty six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're already working all that now. They already had some of that done even, so.
You have, you have a lot going on in the years prior to that, right, Chris?
We have a tremendous amount of paving going on this year. We have a.
Well, I mean, for the sidewalk itself. Like there's something going on every year almost.
Yeah. We've got sidewalks, a sidewalk improvement project on Main Street from Jefferson to thirty seven. We've got a sidewalk improvement project going from Washington to Main Street. We've got this sidewalk project. We've got a, a large end dot project that's starting from Wendy Creek Lane or Drive up near Taco Bell. All the way to thirty seven, a huge paving and a sidewalk project as well. So we've got a tremendous amount of paving and projects. You're going to see a lot of paving and improvements in the next. Five, five years, three years, something like that, if you count the call for end dot project for twenty twenty six. So. We've got a lot of, and then not to mention the sports complex that we're gonna be working on now and the, the pool opening. So we've got a lot of exciting things going on in town. We're, we're definitely moving. So. Any questions? Larry, I thought you'd be excited about my recycling totes more than that.
About your what?
The recycling totes. I'm excited about that, because there are a lot of people who don't have them now and, and they're missed them and moved here. This is a way to help increase some of the items taken to the recycling center up there. So. Since the prices are up, right, Gary?
Absolutely.
So see, the more we bring in, the more money they bring in. It helps them out, helps keep the cost down. So.
The sun is shining.
That's right. All right. But there's nothing else. I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make that move.
We have a motion made by Gary. Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Julie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, meeting stands adjourned.